Five words you pronounce wrong, two years.
Good evening. The school committee business session of March 10th, 2025 will now come to order. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available for viewing on the Methuen Public Schools website. Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Member DeZoglio?
Present.
Member Donovan?
Here.
Member Keegan?
Present.
Member Maxwell?
Here.
Member Chabilla?
Here.
Member Willett?
Here.
Maya Boragad?
May I have a motion and a second to accept the amended agenda for March 10th, 2025 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by a member Chabilla, second by a member DeZoglio. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Superintendent, would you please introduce our student for tonight's flag salute?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to call up Marielle Lucas, the CGS Lower School Associate Principal, and our flag salute for tonight, Jacob Dole.
Good evening. Ready, Jacob? Here we go. I am proud to present Jacob Dole is a fantastic fourth grader from the CGS who will be leading our flag salute tonight. Jacob has been part of the CGS family since kindergarten and from day one, he's been known for his kindness and all-around great attitude. His teacher this year, Mrs. Lim, didn't hesitate for a second when recommending him for this honor. She says he exhibits all the CGS best expectations. He is always respectful, responsible, safe, and ready. He excels in all subjects, is a hard worker, and always looking for and excited by any challenge she can give him.
True.
In addition, he is a great friend to make sure everyone in his class feels included. Mrs. Lim noted that Jacob has many strengths, including baseball, math, and reading. When he's not hitting the books or crushing math problems, you can find him on the baseball field, playing video games, or dirt biking. His favorite subject is PE, of course. Jacob comes from a closely knit family, including mom, dad, his sister Maddie is a 10th grader at Methuen High School, his brother Sam is an 8th grader at CGS, and two awesome dogs. He's got some big goals ahead. He's determined to become a straight A student and make the honor roll when he moves up to upper school. When he grows up, he would like to be a professional baseball player, playing?
Third base.
Third base. Watch out major leagues, Jacob Dole is coming for you. Please help me welcome Jacob Dole to lead the pledge of allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'm here back in the saddle. So at, yes, so at this point, I'll invite the superintendent to introduce our SOAR award students.
Yes. I would like to call up Laura Enright, our World Language Department head, and Mariani Espino Martinez to join her.
The World Language Department is extremely proud to present Mariani Espino Martinez as our 2025 SOAR Award winner for her commitment to and achievements in French, Spanish, and the school community. Languages have always been a strong suit for Mariani. She arrived in Methuen Public Schools as a 7th grader from the Dominican Republic and dedicated herself to acquiring English. She did so with impressive and rare speed. Within four years, she tested out of our English Language Development Program. At Methuen High School, Mariani has increasingly challenged herself with honors classes and this year, AP coursework and dual enrollment with UMass Lowell. She has maintained a 4.097 GPA overall and a 4.5 GPA in World Language coursework. Mariani originally began studying French as a freshman and excelled in it for three years. When planning for senior year, she was inspired to enroll in both AP Spanish and French for honors. Unfortunately, the class is conflicted and she chose the new challenge of an AP course. Her French teacher, Lucy Ogeron, says that Mariani is such an incredible student. She is so kind, generous, ambitious, and studious. She always did an amazing job trying to elaborate and using a variety of vocabulary whenever she could. She truly deserves this award for all her hard work, dedication to languages, and her overall kindness. Currently, Mariani is flourishing in AP Spanish and has already qualified to earn the seal of piliteracy in Spanish upon graduation. Her AP teacher, Tracy McNichols, shares that Mariani is a splash of sunshine, bringing dedication tempered with natural joy to the classroom. She's a personable leader who keeps relationships at the forefront without sacrificing excellence. She encourages others to reach higher with a determination to leave no one behind. As a result, her academic work is top-notch and her contributions to class as a whole are peppered with joy and insight. Following graduation, Mariani plans to attend a four-year college or university, study business administration, and is considering a study abroad experience. Beyond her academic achievements, Mariani is committed to enriching the community, uh, Methuen High School community. Balancing her demanding schedule, she makes time for adoptive grandparent, Spanish club, and the multicultural club. Maria Figareo, the advisor to both the Spanish and multicultural clubs, shares that as secretary of both clubs, she is very reliable. She works very hard and is responsible with her duties. She is very attentive, takes great notes, and is always willing to stay after school to work on any activity for the clubs, which included most recently, our annual quinceañera ball. Mariani is held in the highest regard by Methuen High School faculty for her genuine passion and commitment to learning languages and the MHS community. And it is with great pleasure that we honor her tonight as our SOAR award recipient.
Hi, good evening. First, I want to thank my mom and my stepdad for the support. I also want to thank my language classes teacher for always believing me and always be showing me to, do my best in everything and take risks to grow myself. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the update from the student representative who, I'm sorry? Okay. So he's not here with us this evening, so we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is to approve the DECA International Career Development Conference. We need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion from the vice chair, second from member DeZoglio. We'll entertain discussion. I'll invite, are you here to speak about the DECA?
Yes.
Opportunity? Okay.
Thank you guys for having us. I'm Mr. Regato, Josh Regato. I teach marketing and accounting here, and I'm also the DEC advisor. My co-advisor, Claire Thompson, couldn't be here today. But this past weekend, or two weekends ago, 63 Methuen High School students in DECA competed at the state competition in Seaport, Boston, and we're thrilled to share that five of our students made it to the top 12. Congratulations to Tayab Afsel, Jane Lali, Tansam Mahmood, Amir Matrisamora, and Alvin Nugent for their outstanding achievements. And even more exciting, five students placed in the top six and are eligible to represent MHS at DECA Nationals in Orlando. These students are Ella Benson, Taylor Prokop, Lily Giard, Maya Turkantonis, and Callie Ryan. They've earned a remarkable opportunity, and there's only 10% of students from the state that move forward. So out of 4,000 who competed, 400 are moving forward. This is a rare feat. The last time this has happened for Methuen High School was 2017. So handful of students. This accomplishment is especially meaningful to us at MHS because of the growth and impact DECA has had on our school. DECA has opened doors for so many students at MHS, giving them the chance to engage with the business world and build valuable networks. Just two years ago, we had 20 students involved. Last year, we grew to 55, and this year, we have 200 members. With this kind of momentum, we're confident that our program will see increased numbers moving forward. The energy in the business wing of South House here at Methuen is palpable, and it's amazing to see so many students excited about what DECA has to offer. We've created something that students are eager to be a part of, and we're incredibly proud of the community we built together. So we're here today to just talk about how these students got here. I remember speaking here about a month and a half ago, and this was a dream of ours, and here we are. So thank you guys so much. I'm gonna let some of the students speak.
Good evening. My name is Ella Benson, Vice President, Methuen DECA. Thank you for having me again and for the continuous support you have all given DECA over the past year.
Hi, my name is Taylor Prokop. I'm the Methuen DECA Social Media Chair. I'm a two-year DECA member and have participated in two written papers throughout the years. An integrated marketing campaign for Owala, a business solution paper on mysticling with my partner Ella. Being fortunate enough, we have both attended districts and states both year, and now are very fortunate enough to be attending Nationals in Orlando, Florida come April.
Together, we have taken exams, ran endless pages, presented many projects, and visited Bentley University for the Fall Leadership Conference. While it's been a lot to conquer, uh, even though it's been a lot to conquer through, we have truly loved every moment together in this club. Both being on leadership, working alongside Mr. Regato and Ms. Thompson with events, registering the chapter, recruiting younger classmates, and joking around with each other, we have created many memories and more to come. They have both supported us together and individually in all of our work we have done. They have both pushed us to try harder things in this club, such as jump from a 10-page paper on marketing, in which we have both took classes on, to a 20-page paper on project management, which we went on, which we went into blind, not knowing what most of it meant.
Being on the first leadership team, I've got to watch the fast-growing family we've created here at Methuen High. For being a small club, close to 60 students, with only 20 placing for the state competition last year, we're now close to 200 students with 65 students at state this year and five going on to Nationals. We have both created forever friendships and connections through networking ourselves at events and getting to work with new people in our chapter. We have been given endless opportunities to prove ourselves as strong businesswomen through creating campaign ideas for our club, multiple fundraising events, and bringing our club together with community service. With this leadership team, we have learned the strength of working together, communications, and striving for greatness.
Walking into our Marketing II class in 2023, we were heavily convinced to join this club, expecting to be the average kid in business. Yet, what we never expected to happen has finally come true, a trip to ICDC. I can speak for many people when I say that this experience is one in a million and that what was once a force is now a love.
One of my greatest regrets of high school is not joining DECA my freshman or even my sophomore year. I look at the accomplishments of Callie, Maya, and Lily as sophomores who are going to ICDC and think that could have been me if I just wasn't too scared to join. Two years just wasn't enough, and I wish that I could have had more time with my DECA chapter now nearing its end.
We want to thank our leadership team, Regato, and our families for the support and memories that this club has given us, and look forward to Nationals in April. We would also like to thank you for having us and hope you feel the DECA love and the appreciation we both have.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lily Giard, and next to me, I have Callie Ryan and Maya Turkantonis, and we are sophomores here at Methuen High School. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak tonight. We're honored to share what DECA means to us and how it has shaped our high school experience. Last year, Maya and I competed together in a written event. We put in hours of research, writing, and preparation and hoped that our hard work would pay off. But when we didn't make it past districts, we were devastated. It felt like all that effort had been for nothing, and honestly, we were ready to quit DECA altogether. But Mr. Regato wouldn't let us give up. Day after day, he kept annoying us to stick with it. So much so that at some point, it became easier to stay in the club rather than to keep listening to him tell us why we shouldn't leave. We reluctantly gave DECA one more chance, not realizing that the decision would change everything for us. A year later, we're standing here as national qualifiers. The journey from wanting to quit to making it to ICDC has been surreal, and we owe so much of it to DECA, our incredible support system, and of course, Mr. Regato's persistence.
When I first joined DECA, I didn't realize how much it would shape my future. From preparing for competitions to networking with like-minded students, every moment has been an opportunity to grow. The skills I've gained, especially in critical thinking and communication, will stay with me long after high school. What makes our school's DECA chapter so special is the incredible support system we have. DECA is more than just a business club. It's a community of students who encourage and uplift each other. Whether it's late nights working on papers, uh, running practice role plays, or just hyping each other up before competitions, we've built friendships that extend far beyond the classroom. None of this would be possible without our amazing advisors, Mr. Regato and Mrs. Thompson. They have been our biggest supporters from the very beginning of our DECA journey. They are always available to help us with our projects, answer our endless questions, and provide the guidance we need to succeed. Whether it's listening to our presentations, offering constructive feedback to strengthen our papers, or just giving us words of encouragement before competition, they go above and beyond for us. Beyond DECA, they also teach, they also teach valuable lessons in the classroom that directly impact the quality of our projects, the business concepts, marketing strategies, and problem-solving skills they teach us in our classrooms, our tools we actively apply in our competitions. They make DECA welcoming, supportive, and inspiring, and we're all so grateful for everything they do to help us grow as students and as future professionals. We may not know exactly what careers we want to pursue, but we do know what the skills we've gained from DECA will help us in any path career we choose. DECA has taught us how to think critically, communicate confidently, and handle high-pressure situations, which are skills that go beyond business and can be applied to any field. No matter where we end up, DECA has given us the tools we need to succeed in the real world. This experience is even more meaningful because we are only the second group in Methuen High history to qualify for DECA Nationals or ICDC. It's an honor to represent our school and community on such a prestigious stage. We will be heading to Orlando, Florida in April, where we will compete against the best DECA students from all over the world. ICDC is more than just a competition. It's a once-in-a-lifetime experience. We'll have the opportunity to attend workshops led by industry professionals, network with students and business leaders, and gain real-world experience in marketing, finance, hospitality, and entrepreneurship. We'll also get to compete in DECA After Dark events, explore the city, and of course, visit Disney World and Universal Studios. One of the things we're most excited about is experiencing ICDC along two, alongside two amazing seniors, Ella and Taylor. They have been our role models for us through our DECA journey, always being there to offer advice, encouragement, and plenty of laughs. Their leadership and passion for DECA has inspired us, and we're so grateful to have this opportunity to compete with them one last time. As they get ready to graduate and move on to new adventures, we know we'll miss them, but we're also excited to make incredible final DECA memories together in Orlando. Beyond competition, DECA has given us the opportunity to turn our ideas into something meaningful. That's how our project this year was born. Empower Her is a subscription box service designed to uplift and support women and cater to their wellness and lifestyle needs. We came up with the idea because we wanted to create something that inspires confidence and celebrates self-care and empowerment. What started as a simple concept quickly became a passion project, and through DECA, we've gained the skills to bring it to life. From learning how to market the service, developing a sustainable business model, and taking care of all the finances, DECA gave us the foundation to turn our idea into something real, and it's because of this project that we're heading to Nationals.
ICDC isn't just about competing. It's about proving to ourselves how far we've come and how much further we can go. We are so grateful for this opportunity and the support we've received from our school, our advisors, and our fellow students. Thank you for your time and support.
So first of all, congratulations to you all on making it to this point. We're very happy for you, and I know the committee is certainly happy to support you in this endeavor. Do we have any other discussion? Vice Chair?
So I have, um, two questions. One, where's the money coming from? And two, these are not excused absences under our policy, and how do we make it so so that they don't get, because this is gonna affect their fourth quarter?
Yep.
So I want to make sure that those absences get excused.
Yep. So Mr. Corret can do that as the principal and make them excused? That's number one. Get that one on the way. The money, we are looking at some options for fundraising, sponsorship, and certainly some operating monies to do this. This is definitely something that Dr. Golovski and I have been asking other large schools, how do they fund this? We've never had a chapter this large, and so this is also kind of new for us to think about their registration and their travel and all these things to provide this opportunity. So a lot of the other large districts, actually, there are large grants that other schools like Brockton High School, Haverhill High School are using for these costs, which we are certainly going to pursue for next year. So to get them through this point, which we don't want them to miss, we are going to pursue fundraising, sponsorship, and some operating money costs. We're very confident that we'll be able to send them financially.
Any other questions, discussion? If not, we'll, Member Maxwell?
On here, it does say that there's a strict itinerary and timeline and schedule of events.
Yes.
Yes.
Do they get that before they go? And in another section, I can't find it, but it says that they'd be contacted by their cell phones. It says that no student will be allowed to go anywhere alone, but they... The way that they'll stay in contact is with their cell phones, and that also goes against our policy, so how are we gonna...
Everything will be so that they will have a successful trip, so we don't think that they will misuse that while they're there for communication, so we will... These are also rules that they're setting for them to be able to participate. So they actually, we don't have choices for some of these things. For example, all Massachusetts students are in the same hotel, like each state has a different hotel that they have to stay in with a different rate, so this isn't something that we chose to do. The detailed itinerary actually is online, we didn't include it here, but some of these points came from that detailed itinerary online, if you go and look at the conference for the leaders for this, for these girls. So you know, we intend to, yes, stay within our rules, but we have to also follow the rules when we send kids away, just like we do when we go to Disney for our students for the band trip. But also, something that is new and worth pointing out is, in the past, they always allowed parents to go with their students, and this has to be a school-sponsored, the advisors have to be present. So there's some changes that they've had over the years that just we haven't been able to keep up on because we haven't had kids who have qualified, but those are some changes that we do have to send the adults with our students to represent Methuen High School, from the school. The parents can go, but we have to actually support the advisors and the students who qualify to go.
Any other questions? Member Donovan?
Really quickly, I'm wondering, is there a way we could get real-time updates on your progress and hopefully success? I don't want to wait until the next school committee meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
We can get, I'm sure Mr. Regatto and Ms. Thompson will give us very detailed updates as they're there, so we can report those out. I'm sure Mr. Corret will report those out too to the school.
Thank you.
Yeah, it'll be exciting.
Any other questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Enjoy your trip.
Excellent, thank you.
I skipped over on the agenda, the update from the Student Council Representatives, so we'll circle back to that. I'll invite the representatives to come to the podium to share some updates.
It's okay, don't worry. Good evening. My name is Gabriela Gordato, and I'm a ninth grader at Methuen High School.
My name is Aviana Lopez, and I'm also a ninth grader.
All right, to begin, DECA is bringing back their 3v3 basketball fundraiser tomorrow, March 11th at 2:00 PM. This event is a fantastic opportunity to support our students, have some fun, and showcase our school's spirit. We're looking for teacher teams to participate, as well as chaperones to make this event a success. You can be a seasoned player, or if you just want to cheer from the sidelines. Your involvement would mean a lot to our students and the DECA program.
The Telethon. On March 18th and 19th, Methuen High School's 34th Annual Telethon will take place as a fundraiser for the Methuen Scholarship Foundation. The event will be streamed on Comcast, Verizon, and Verizon HD. The Scholarship Foundation has helped seniors with thousands of dollars to pursue their further education. The Telethon broadcasts students' talents, as well as multiple raffles and auctions to help raise money for their cause. The Scholarship Foundation is looking for local businesses, organizations, and individuals to help sponsor or donate auction/raffle items for fundraising of the Telethon future events.
All right. Girls Hockey Playoffs. Congratulations to the Methuen High School Red Rangers on their 4-1 quarterfinal win against Malden Catholic Thursday, March 6th. The Red Rangers moved on to the Final Four and faced off against Bishop's Singing Saturday, March 8th at 7:15 PM. Sadly, they lost 2-3 in overtime.
The Chorus Coffee House took place on Saturday, the 8th, and consisted of many talented singers, singing a variety of different songs. One Coffee House participant reflected on her experience. Despite the amount of hard work it took to set Coffee House up, it was still an extremely gratifying experience. Being able to support and share music with one another was so fulfilling. Even if there was some bumps in the road, it was all very much worth it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your updates. Next on the agenda, we have public participation. Do we have anybody who's signed up? All right, so no one has signed up, and I don't think anyone has otherwise reached out with anything in writing, so at this point, we will close the public participation portion of our meeting. If you are unable to make a meeting in person for public participation, you can send an email to marthasirrois@methuen.k12.ma.us before 3:00 PM on the day of a school committee meeting. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We need a motion and a second to approve the minutes of February 10, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is from Member Dzoglio, second is from the Vice Chair. Discussion? There's no discussion. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we need a motion and a second to approve the minutes of February 24, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's from the Vice Chair, the second is from Member Shabelia. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we'll move on to staff reports. First on the agenda, we have listed is the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent. Update, don't think we have anything new to share in particular, so we can move on to the new student data report. Superintendent?
Thank you. So what you have in front of you is new, and we want to talk about it this evening. This was something that came out of the school committee's initial discussion to condense, change, present numbers that actually are within the purview of the school committee, could help us with the budget, any policies that we have. Member Donovan and I met several weeks ago and went through sort of what it could look like, and what we're presenting tonight is something that Dr. Golovski and I worked with our data enrollment after that meeting to see what we could pull that could actually help us tell a story, but using the data that is currently in our student management system. So I did do a cover page, because of course, it's not quite as easy as it appears. Numbers should just subtract and equal something else, and that's not quite what happens here for a variety of reasons. So I did bullet some of these pieces that hopefully, you know, might have come to your mind as you were looking at this. And of course, this is and can be a work in progress. There are some things here, though, that are striking and striking to us as we start collecting these numbers. So first of all, most of, this represents all new enrollees from the end of last school year to now. So we did include August because that has to capture the kindergarten students, so most of those 424 in August are kindergarten students, but those are new enrollees in Methuen Public Schools. So again, we couldn't figure out a way not to capture that and still have a picture of all new enrollees for 24-25 school year, so we left that as is. And as you can see, just in that alone, of the August enrollments, 25% of those enrollments were English learners, identified as English learners. So I think that's the column that's capturing our attention the most at this point. As you go through this, the other piece of this that can be challenging and would be, we talked through it quite a lot to see what we could disaggregate even further, it gets a little more challenging, but many of these students are multi-in-multicategories, that's why the numbers don't add up, right? So we have students who are English learners, McKinny Vento, and students with disability, right? So we have multi-dually identified students, if you would. As an example, just right now, I'm not saying they're new students, but at the Tenny Grammar School, we have 90 duly identified students as English learners and students on IEP. So there's this multi-category piece that happens, right? We see this with MCAS data, it's not a unique number in each of those fields. So that can be a little bit of a challenge, but you still see it's the number of students we are required to service or staff, really, these are the categories that we have our highest priority and have our highest attention on. So the same thing you can see with the withdrawals on the bottom, it's the same categories, and I did put a key on the bottom of the memo just to make sure everybody sort of knew what we were talking about. Within district disability, those could be everything from students who receive speech to students in our sub-separate programs here in district, right? So it runs the gamut. The OOD is out-of-district, that's how we categorize or label out-of-district students with that acronym, English Language Learner. Preschool students, anybody who is at Branch Street is categorized as a preschool student. McKinny Vento, those designated under the law as homeless, and then non-students, non-students with disabilities and English learners, right? So those are students who are not categorized in any of those other categories that you see here. The one addition to the bottom of withdrawals is the second-to-last one, we did add residency withdrawal, so you could actually see that, that was something that we wanted to capture, but did it needed to be by itself somewhere? That was part of our conversation as well, how to sort of compress, if you would, this information, but also make it meaningful. And I think the most important for us is that you can clearly see here that the number of enrollments in certain categories, it is not a wash, right? So we are enrolling higher numbers of students with disabilities and English learners than we are having them withdraw. This is what I've been talking about for years, right? So this is the kind of data that we need to present to the community and have out in the public, because this is what people are really not understanding, right? With the whole, our enrollment is down, however, the students that we have, and if we did start to disaggregate this, are 120 students in a sub-separate setting in Methuen in one program, our ASC program at the Marsh, the Pathways Program at the Marsh, that's included in all of this, right? So that is what we really, the message that needs to be really clear out with us in our conversations, and there is no doubt at this point, what we'll be presenting on the 24th is going to show this. This is, we need support staff, it's not classroom teachers. And again, I've been saying that now for a few years, our class sizes are exactly where they should be, but we continue to open classrooms at Branch Street, continue to open classrooms in K through 12 for our sub-separate kids, so that comes with the cost of support staff. So that is what we're preparing for when we present our preliminary budget to you on the 24th. So that is one thing I thought was, you know, this puts those numbers and data, this is exactly what is in our student enrollment, this is exactly the information we send to the state, this is not us looking at something, Matt Cirqua, our data manager, is able to automate this information, right? Pull it every month from Infinite Campus to then populate this, there's no manipulation of those numbers, it's just an automated process once he set it up for us. So again, this was what we thought would represent the conversations we had here briefly, and then a little lengthier conversation with Member Donovan about numbers. And again, it did take some, I think it needs some of that explanation, because it's not, you're not going to get this minus this equals the number we're at, it's just not that easy. And I will say, right now, as of March 5th, when I created this memo, unfortunately, and it isn't unfortunately, we are 100-plus students above our October 1st enrollment today, where we were then, so that is, that is 100 students that we will not see as part of our foundation budget. So I'm not seeing our enrollment decline, it's actually this year, and that can work, depending on the year, it can work oppositely, right? We could lose students after October 1, but we still, our foundation budget is created with that October 1 enrollment. So it is unfortunate, because 100-plus is a lot of, that's a lot of money, you know, that's like 1 million plus when you're looking at 100 students. Yeah, it's a lot. So it is, again, unfortunate, those are things that we also have to, to, you know, plan for going forward.
Discussion, Member Shabelia?
Just to clarify, that number is $1,745,000.
Thank you so much.
Assuming a $15,000 per head.
Yeah, and I think, I actually think our, I think our per pupil is a little higher than that, per Desi's sheet, it's a little higher than 15.
It is, but that made my math on the top of the sheet here a lot easier.
Yeah. No, it's definitely close. It's significant to be, when I said unfortunately, I really truly mean unfortunately, that that was just money that we did not
Right.
receive, and they are going to be with us, you know?
So we have this $1.7 million amount over our heads. I did some quick totals on the page here, and I mean, we are, we are, we are taking on more than we're losing? How do we account for this? Because I know that the looming elephant in the room is always that $4 million, and this being unbudgeted, total surprise, there's no way you planned for this, how do we, how do we account for that? How do we, is it magic money, like?
There's no, yeah, no, there's no magic money. I wish...
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, we wish there were magic trees and plants, but there's no magic money, we just, we have to plan for what we currently have, right? And we know what our enrollments are moving forward for class sizes, so I'm taking, I take what we have right now, I don't go back to October 1st, right? So when we're creating and what we're presenting to you on Monday is current, what do we have sitting in front of us today, which still could change by July 1st? That is one of the challenges of urban districts, right? We have our churn rate, our in and our out is just higher, and this is why we come to you in the middle of school years and say, "We need an ESL teacher, we need special education classrooms to open," because there are certain things we can't, we can't predict, but we definitely try to plan the best that we can with what we have up until that moment where we have to approve those numbers. So we are looking at all of the budget that we are presenting is based on today's numbers of enrollment, not what was October 1st.
So my next question is on the withdrawals for residency, I see 23. On the chart on the next page, for the regular residency chart, 27, and then for the grade level residency withdrawn, I see seven. So I don't know, is that seven counted in that 27?
No.
No? So that, I don't understand, this number and that number don't line up, and I also don't know what months. These are four versus this one?
I could speak to that.
Lisa has that answer to that.
So I believe what the Superintendent is proposing is that this new chart take the place of the previous residency chart, because it gives the description that we're looking for. And in the prior residency chart, the withdrawals included students who threw our residency checks, we were waiting for their families to bring in documents, and the families knew they had them and just had missed the appointment or had made an appointment past the deadline. This colored chart does not include those numbers, but the previous chart did. So we thought if we included those numbers here, it might be a little confusing, because then they would be in the enrollment category when they always had been here.
So whether the number is 34 or 23, I guess I have the same questions as two meetings ago, like what, what did it cost us to do this, and what is the net benefit? What did we gain?
From which part?
From going through all of the energy of the residency checks, what is the net benefit?
So I think there's probably not a monetary net benefit that I could calculate, because, I mean, I guess I could per pupil, but again, I have more kids coming in than I do leaving, right? So these 23 kids that are withdrawing don't even come close to the number that I have enrolling above what we had for October 1st. But I think there is a public relations aspect to this that is important for us to make sure that we are continuously educating Methuen Public School students, and that there is a process. And that, I would say, parents, when they ask us, right, what that process is, or they have an extenuating circumstance, we have something in place for them to request, and all of that goes through me, right? So it's not a huge amount of people, but when those families are in a really interesting predicament or going through a family situation and they need to stay in Methuen or leave Methuen or... Methuen, or they're split and it's 50-50 and choose a district, I think all of those things are important to keep. I don't know if I'm answering your question, you know, but I, I do think there is, if, if we don't enforce it and we're not looking to enforce it, it will get away from us.
Agreed. And I know I just got the buzzer of death, so I will wrap it up real quick.
I probably did most of the talking, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I forgive you. The 144 that were proven and the 30 that are ongoing, I guess I'd like to know where those generate from? Are those coming from our double top secret tip line? Are those coming from a source like, just?
So there have been no residency investigation requests through the phone number hotline. It all comes through the Google form, either by community members and/or staff reporting because either something's been reported in the school. We've had returned mail, because we list do not forwards, so when we get returned mail, that initiates a residency investigation as well.
The staff reporting, I support. The, the Google form for community members, I just, I feel like that's a slippery slope.
Well, the Google form is for everybody, so that's how our staff reports as well.
Right. I just feel like this, the Google form letting, you know, anybody out in the community report, I'd be curious to see what the turnaround rate is on those and the process and, or the findings of which you have, to see if we're being sent on wild goose chases for any other reason, or if it's, if it's worthwhile, I guess, to have it open to the community.
The community members are not as, it's not a large number that we get compared to the staff reports, based on either what students are saying in school about them, their own situations, and/or staff just reporting because of a bunch of reasons.
All right, thank you.
I would also add, Member Shabelia, I know I have received, so has Ms. Bozek, emails from community members, and often, community members are, they're mostly kind when they email us, wanting to alert us to a situation. And unlike, you know, staff, they may just not know the details around that situation. So they're just making sure somebody in the school department is aware that X has happened or is happening. It's been a long time since we've gotten anything that has been charged, if you would, like from, from somebody in the greater community and not the staff. Yep.
Other questions, discussion? Vice Chair, then Member Willet?
On the key for the tables, it does not include anywhere high school students. Are the high school students in the chart and just omitted from the key? Or is the key correct and there's no high school students in the chart?
No, there's definitely high school students in it. Why, why do you say that there's no high school students?
Because when it says in district disabilities, students in the resource rooms, K-8 pathways, district-wide specialized programs, including Marsh, Timoney, CGS, and Tenney, but there's nothing with the high school.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, they're all high school, everything is high school included in this. There's, we didn't leave anybody out pre-K through 12.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
See, I try to define it and then I leave stuff out.
Member Willet?
Just curious, when a person is found to be in violation of the policy, they're given the option to do a tuition payment, right? That's part of the policy is that if we find you, you would have to either reimburse the school district in some fashion. So there is a cost factor involved.
But we've never, we've never sought a reimbursement, and that was something that we spoke at great length with our legal counsel about when we changed the residency policy with the subcommittee, that if, if we find that they're in violation and we, we remove them, well, we're never going to see a $12,000 tuition payment.
Okay. So I'm a little bit confused, because why would we even need to seek tuition reimbursement if there's not a cost factor to the city of Methuen? There would be a cost factor to the city of Methuen. Now, we don't follow through on a legal basis, and we also, as a school committee, we take a position not to participate in school choice.
Correct.
Every year. So we have a strong residency enforcement policy. We found people in violation, we send out warning letters, they withdraw, but also the backup is to send them out tuition statements, because there is a cost factor, and we decide not to participate in school choice. So I'm not understanding what the problem is in terms of having residency enforcement and we don't participate in school choice and allowing for people to forward concerns through the administration, because it's been working as a system for years. We're not going to have hundreds of students removed. That was initially, when we did the policy, we removed a good amount of students. We're averaging about 50 students per year. And I think that's something, again, we have the spot audits, we don't do full audits, and I think most people are in compliance, and there should be, if they're not attending Methuen Public Schools, if they're non-residents, they should not be attending Methuen Public Schools. So I appreciate the fact that we're doing additional subcategory going forward, because I think it was commingling the numbers, and I think we separate that. But I'm trying to understand the rationale from prior conversations and prior meetings that if we find somebody in violation, hypothetically, we could send them out a tuition statement.
We certainly can. I mean.
So there's a cost factor.
We can, except we're just never going to get the tuition.
But there's a cost factor then. Why would you send out a tuition statement if there's not a cost factor? There is a cost factor.
It depend, it depends on when they were with us and when they left, and also, there's the whole, and one of the, I know, remember the lengthy conversation we had with one of our councilmen, councils, was, you know, there are kids, if we, if they were counted in our October 1st enrollment, they were counted. And so we got the funds for that student, and now they withdraw. So there's a lot of pieces to that. I think when we originally had the subcommittee a few years ago, it, it was really a matter of, we needed to put something in place. There have been a few during my time, and I'm looking at Ms. Bozek, because she's been involved in them, but there's been a few where we've had to, the, there has been a battle, whether or not they were going to actually withdraw the student or not. And during those times, we work with our legal counsel for a tuition statement, you know, a little more push to the fact that, right, we, we know that you don't live here, you need to withdraw and enroll in the town that you live in. So there has been some, some of those, but like I said, I don't, I think we need to enforce the policy for, if we don't enforce it, it absolutely will get away from us. I hope I've made that myself clear on that. You know, I think doing the, the two grade levels, the timing that we do it is working as far as when our family resource engagement specialists are not enrolling, right? The fall and the spring is when it gets really busy for our enrollment specialists. And so doing the residency checks between January and March is a good time to do that, to make sure that we have kids sort of in the right places they go on to the next year. So I, I, I feel the system we have in place right now is, is working and not overtaxing our staff. If we had to do all the grade levels, that would not be, you know, worth it, but doing two grade levels at a time and then all of kindergarten. So we have all of kindergarten, and then every fourth and eighth grade as they move along, has been a very good system for the past several years, so.
Okay.
I would, you know, I'm in favor of continuing to enforce it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Member DeZoglio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So back on the subcommittee, though, I, me and Member Pesch did ask if we could get reimbursement, and we wanted to pursue that.
Right.
So the question, especially with budgets, the way it is, I would like to talk to our legal counsel again to see if reimbursement is possible now. It, it's a dangerous game, but if people are, I guess, Member Willet's saying, it is a cost factor to us, and even though we do get the funds, we're still going to lose that funds for the next year possibility, so. And we have already used that money or et cetera with services and stuff like that. So I feel like, Member Willet, has, you know, I think that's a conversation we need to talk to our legal counsel about, because.
We can and we have. I just also caution, right? The, the conversation we had during that subcommittee was also, there's a cost to seeking, to fighting that, right? So every time we call our legal counsel, there's a cost to our operating budget. Every time we have them draft a letter, every time they talk to another attorney, there's a cost factor to that, too. So that was part of the conversation of, we're chasing something we may never get, and now I'm paying something and not getting anything in return, because if they do what we asked them to do and withdraw and do all those things in a court of law, it's not going to go anywhere, right? So there, there's, we can ask for it, but fighting to get it is where we're going to end up paying more money to fight to get those funds that we're never going to see. And so that's, again, it's a, it's a, it's a possibility, but, you know, getting those funds and figuring out what that tuition would be is challenging. And again, if it happens after October 1st for the following year, I've already, they've already counted in my next year's budget, right? So it's, it's, there's just some challenges there. I mean, we can certainly bring it back up with them to see if there's any changes. Can't hurt.
Member Willet?
I just, I wanted confirmation that it is a cost factor, because hence, why would we need to send out the, even the threat of reimbursement or tuition statements to these students? They're voluntarily leaving after an investigation, they have improved residency, and they're not a burden to the taxpayers in Methuen. I just want confirmation, and I think I got it, that they're a cost factor. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, we will move on to the report from the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. Any questions from the committee regarding that report? Going once, going twice. All right, moving on. Do we have any questions from the committee regarding the Human Resources Report?
Not much changes.
Any questions from the committee relative to the out-of-school suspensions and other disciplinary actions report? All right, we'll move on to old business and other pending matters. We have the policy relative to staff access to student information. This is the second and final read. We need a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, second from the Vice Chair. Discussion.
Yes. So, so Member Keegan and Ms. Bozek and I do need to have a discussion with everybody. We did seek legal counsel after our meeting, which we discussed here during our first read, to see if there were any references or any other things that we needed to include before our second read. And it was a productive and fruitful conversation. I had, I was only on one of those conversations. Member Keegan did join with Attorney Joyce and Ms. Bozek on a second occasion. So, so basically, we are being advised not to vote this into policy for a variety of reasons that we will share with you this evening, but the most important one that we, I would say, I even lose, lost sight of a little bit, is our, our obligations for staff to have access to student records is during the school day and during academic time. And by, I thought, kind of common sense, like we all did when we went through this, that it made sense for all of our staff to have access to all of our students regardless of the activity and the situation that was related to Methuen Public Schools. But that is not the case, and there are parents, and Attorney Joyce brought this up, I know in my conversation, I'll let Ms., Member Keegan speak on her conversation with Attorney Joyce, but there are parents who do not want people knowing their children's disabilities, language, whatever that may be, when they are in after-school activities or sports or athletics. And so we also have to make sure that we're not giving things to our staff that we shouldn't be. And so with that, that is, it kind of in a nutshell, our conversations were much longer, but that's in a nutshell, and basically got to a point where Attorney Joyce recommended that we have for every extracurricular, for every coaching, for every athletics, all across the grade levels and schools, that we have a form, a very standard sort of procedural when that activity starts, when that season starts, that the coach, the advisor hands consent to the parents. If the parents wish to share information with that coach or advisor about their child that they think will pertain to that activity, then the parents have to give consent and also share with us the amount of information they want to share, that, that also does not open up the entire student record to those folks. So it was very eye-opening. I sincerely apologize that I didn't seek legal counsel before. It didn't even cross any of our minds that this would be that problematic, because it seemed like it was common sense to have that kind of access. So that is it in a nutshell, but we also had this on the table for second read, so we need to close this out. It cannot remain on the table after our first read, so we needed to put it on the agenda tonight for second read with the hopes that you will not vote it as a yes. I know it seems odd, but that's just part of the process, too. We can't have it just sitting out there after first read with no explanation as to what it is and why we didn't vote it, and then it will die. But, Member Keegan, I'll allow you, and then Ms. Bozek, if I missed anything.
Yeah, so I was fully in support of this, and after having a very lengthy conversation with Attorney Joyce, I agree that we need to vote this down, and we need to put in a, a procedure, not a policy, that gets parent consent. I think it's, it's the right thing to do, so I would encourage everyone to vote this down. Please say no.
It's a very unusual way to present a policy. I don't know if I've done this yet, but this might be a first.
Seems like a procedural question from Member Willet.
Yeah, why can't it just be redrawn by the sponsor?
Maybe that could be.
Without scuttling it like World War II ship.
Well, I think there's, there's multiple ways to pursue it. I think just simply pulling it is, is one solution, but then, this is also, I think, something that achieves the same result, assuming a no vote from the committee. But, you know, I, I would agree, this does add an extra step, but nevertheless, we have it on.
I just wish it was. Redrawn by the sponsor.
Yeah. Any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote?
I guess not.
Member DeZoglio?
No.
Member Donovan?
No.
Member Keegan?
No.
Member Maxwell?
No.
Member Shabelia?
No.
Member Willet?
No.
Mayor Boragon?
No.
Policy failed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seems odd, I know.
All right.
Learned, we learned.
Moving on to new business, we have none on the agenda. Next, we have finance and operations. I'll begin with the expenditure report. Do we have any questions or concerns from the committee regarding the expenditure report? Member Donovan?
I would, I would just like to say, in, in the same spirit of looking at data differently, I appreciate, and I didn't express it enough at the last meeting, Mr. Goslin, add to that extra column on the general budget report to kind of show us where we are, where we want to be. And I appreciate that.
I did mean to shade it, so it stands out as different. I forgot. Next one, we'll definitely shade it.
Set off? Yeah. Any other questions from the committee? If not, we'll move on to the revolving funds report. Any questions, concerns?
I did.
Member Maxwell?
What are the other expenses?
The short story is contracted services, any service, supply, other is anything that doesn't fit there, such as subscriptions, postage, memberships to professional.
All right. Any other questions from the committee? If not, we'll move on to, we're covering now revolving funds. We'll move on to grants.
I'm just, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Member Willet?
In terms of just, again, there's a common theme, meeting to meeting, now we're going into this, the spring months, that $62,000 in the student packing fund, hopefully we'll whittle it down and incur some new projects and some new items. I mentioned some public safety-related items, too, so hopefully that's done soon. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Member DeZoglio?
Yes, for the grants, have we?
Um, yes. Um, for the grants, have we have any update from the Department of Education, the federal level, yeah, of any changes?
None.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
We are in touch with Congresswoman Drahan's office though, relative to any updates that might be coming down the pike. Alright, we'll move on to student activity accounts. Any further questions? Food services report, any questions, concerns regarding the food services report? Member Willeth?
Just in terms of the, the survey, I think there was gonna be a vehicle to survey the kids. Just checking on the status of that.
I did speak to Mr. Frady about it. Um, so I know it's on his mind. Cause we had a, we had, over February vacation, we also had folks in uh, test tasting some new items. Uh, so that was a part of our conversation that Mr. Goslin and I had with him. So I'll, I will double check with him, but definitely a conversation we've had and he would like to do it too.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the committee? If not, next on the agenda is contract awards. There are none tonight. Uh, notification of appointments and other personnel matters, we have none. Moving on to other business from the committee. Uh, we have uh, cell phone, uh, cell phone used by school committee members while school committee is in session. This was brought up by me at the last meeting. Uh, so I spoke in error during the last meeting. Uh, this is not something that is consideration for a new policy. This is something that I, as the chair, have discretion to implement. And you know, one of the themes that I have been pursuing uh, in my time as our city's mayor is to do what I can to help make our government uh, more professional. And I think a key way to do that is by expanding, you know, we have this, a new policy in the schools relative to trying to limit the use of cell phones. I think, uh, generally speaking, you know, we see evidence of how that can uh, be a distraction for learning in the classroom. And I think to a similar extent, uh, for the adults here at the table. You know, that can be sometimes a distraction as well. And so what I'm going to establish going forward, uh, and I'm gonna state uh, something along these lines at the beginning of future meetings, just as a friendly reminder. Uh, my ask is going to be that if you need to take a call, uh, communicate via text during a meeting, my ask is that you simply step away from the table to conduct your personal business. I think that that is respectful and appropriate for us to I guess, adopt as behavior going forward. And something that I think is really important for us overall as well. Uh, not up for discussion, uh, that's something that I'm gonna be asking of the committee going forward. Uh, next we have, uh, school committee training session selection discussion. Uh, Member Donovan had added this to the agenda. I'll invite her to expand further.
Yeah. Oh, first of all, I need to start out by thanking Member DeZoglio for, um, you know, making this part of what we do in addition to, well, what we do. And that said, I got really interested in what we could do. And MASC provides us with a list of potential training. Uh, my favorite is the five dysfunctions of a team, which looks really intriguing to me. But that said, um, as I dug a little deeper, I found um, a document called Protocols and Best Practices for Effective School Committee Meetings. And the, our contact, our liaison at MASC, said she could certainly put together something along these lines because it would impact our governance, governance. And including, and you could find this online at the MASC, they have how we communicate, how we improve, and there was one other. And I just thought that is really something that I don't think has ever really been discussed by the board. Many years ago, when I covered the events on this board, it seems like it was the same setup. Um, so I'm wondering if it's time to evaluate how we do business. Included in this package is a handy dandy graphic organizer, which um, presents a whole bunch of scenarios. What, do we have a concern in areas? How are we gonna handle things from stuff we've discussed before? Visiting schools, confidentiality? What happens when a member of the community has a concern? Um, do we need a written protocol? Do we need a policy? Um, and Alicia, our liaison, said she'd be more than happy to put together a training along these lines. Obviously, it's, you know, the will of the board. Um, but I'm wondering if it's time, as a group of elected officials, to think about how we do business and how we can become more effective and professional and make sure the integrity of what we do is always preserved.
Thank you, Member Donovan. I think that would be helpful for us, just as an institution, as a, as a, as a committee. Uh, any other discussion? Member DeZoglio?
Um, I just want to thank Member Donovan for doing the research and everything like that. Um, I'm all for that. And also, Alicia also said we can combine certain things, so that could be one. Um, if you wanted to do like budgeting, um, I think, uh, there's a whole list. So that could be one. And then if we want to add other topics to that, she will combine all that training into one. So we could actually maybe cover three topics or two topics, whatever works for the committee. So I think that would be great if we, I had the list. I don't know why we didn't add that to the policy on the backside of it. But we could probably, next meeting, I think we should vote on that. And plus, if we want to do a combine on different topics, we have that as well in the next meeting. I think we should make, because I think the way the policy is written, we have to vote on it. So that should be on the agenda for next. And then we vote, we have that done. But, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll move on to discussion regarding, under other business, we have the proposed joint meeting with the city council on March 17th, one week from tonight. Uh, just to share some insights, and I know there's gonna be some discussion here. Uh, I received several meetings ago, a request to schedule this joint meeting with the council. And as we know, you know, there is a requirement that there be at least two joint meetings with the council held annually. And, uh, you know, my thinking, at least with this meeting, uh, as we start to go into the next budget cycle, is to have perhaps a check in with the council during this current fiscal year as it comes to a close in the coming months. Um, I think that there's gonna be some debate about this. Uh, we can entertain that discussion. But nevertheless, uh, this was a request that I received from the council and, uh, I don't see the hurt in doing it. Um, but I will open it up for discussion, simply because it is on the agenda. Member Shabilia?
How did you know? Um, so I want to first recognize that I know this puts you in a particularly difficult position, having to coordinate with the council and the school committee. That being said, we are getting our budget packet on the, for our meeting on the 24th. So we're going into this meeting a week before our budget comes out to talk to them about where we are for the year, when they can literally look in the packet and see where we are for the year. On St. Patrick's Day, they want to gather us around the table to talk about where are you when they already know. It doesn't seem like a good use of anybody's time. I totally support and agree, we should be, we have to do our two meetings a year. But let's make it count. Sitting in that room, so they can say, "School committee, you're bad. You don't do what you're supposed to do. Your schools are..." I don't care. We don't work for them. None of us do. We have to have our meeting, but if we can wait until after the 24th, when we get our budget, we can go to them and explain what's coming their way so they're not seeing it for the first time when you distribute the budget package in totality. Because first, I don't quite really think that's, that's fair to them because it's a lot to digest. It's not a one department thing, like the PD or the Fight Department or anybody else. We are the, we are 51, 52% of the district. That is what we should be discussing. We should be discussing the economy of schools. Not, are you gonna make your number this year? That's a waste of time and I'm a hard no on that meeting. Thank you.
Vice Chair?
I have to agree with Member Shabilia. Um, it seems to me that we're going into an absolutely abysmal budgeting cycle. And I think it is far more beneficial to us to start preparing the council for the school needs of next year versus where we are this year. Because this year, we're doing okay and we're making our numbers. But next year, we're gonna be facing a huge deficit in funding. And if we don't, if we don't have the information to present to them, then it's going to be a wasted opportunity, number one. And number two, they want to hear about next year, not this year. They're gonna be asking us what's coming down the pike. And we're not gonna have the answers. So I, I wholeheartedly agree with Member Shabilia that we should put it after we get our budget, so that we can answer those questions for them.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I just want to be cognizant of using the word deficit, given the history of the school department and that word in recent years. Uh, we do not have a deficit issue right now. I know we're gonna have some difficult choices to make and difficult budget cycle ahead, but I just want to clarify that. Do we have further discussion? Member DeZoglio?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't like that word either. And I've been on the school committee for five years and I've never had a deficit. Um, yeah, I, I kind of agree with Member Shabilia and Member Keegan. Um, usually I don't have an issue with these meetings. But, but what has happened over the years, kind of what Member Shabilia said, it turns it to, I feel like, well, especially my brother being on the other side, I feel like I'd be told, um, what I did wrong at Thanksgiving dinner. Um, when we don't have the exact numbers and I always have to respond with, but we're not in a deficit. I actually agree with Member Shabilia. We're now beyond the bond, the paying back the $4 million and being told, yep, we're doing right by this district. I think it's this year, especially this, this specific year. We need to go in because we're, we're trying to actually get them to approve more money and more of our budget. So we should be explaining to them why we need their help to approve. More than, we made our number this year, so can you give us a gold star? So I agree with Member Shabilia on that. I think we should postpone it until after we receive our budget.
Any other discussion? Member Willeth?
I just thought, when we had the prior meeting about the, the audit, I think we were all in a synergy on the audit. And we were able to make some comments or some, give some feedback to a proposal that wasn't finalized at that moment in time. To have us gather before the city council meeting and discuss the budget for one hour, all the competing interests, all the egos into one room, I, I don't think it's productive. And what I've noticed, and I'm not going to highlight the specific city councillors, but they have these common themes of, we're a top-heavy administration, which is not accurate. And, you know, we've been decimated by a reduction in the custodial ranks. And that's something we should be discussing. And we should be involved in the legislative delegation. And the senator did an amendment on the gateway communities. I don't know how you can have all those different questions, the give and take, the dynamic, the presentation, to discuss something that is very complex. And we're, again, what Member DeZoglio and what other members have talked about in terms of what's gonna be the nebulous response from the federal government, which we don't know collectively. We don't know what's gonna be happening. The, the state right now is pretty good with the revenue stream. And we don't know what's gonna happen with the state. Um, and I know the legislative delegation will support amendments, but the budget itself, what the vice chair indicated, it's gonna be devastating to us. To encapsulate that in one hour, I, I, I don't think that's gonna be productive. I think it's gonna be a train wreck. We're gonna have people coming into the city council meeting that starts at seven. Perhaps if we start the meeting late, if it's six, we're gonna do 45 minutes. I think the superintendent should be accorded the opportunity to present some type of roadmap. Um, so I don't know why we have these joint meetings, if we're only gonna be condensed to one hour of discussion of a major topic. Um, so that's my two cents. I, I don't think it's worthy. I think, if we had a separate night, I don't think anybody on the school committee would say, you know what, I can't do a Wednesday, or I can't do a Thursday. We've done special meetings, we've done Zoom meetings. Um, but they want to pigeonhole us one hour before their city council meeting starts and we're gonna have a discussion of the FY '26 budget in one hour timeframe? Of all the competing interests and all the egos in one room? I'd say that's typical Methuen politics, unfortunately. And I understand you're the, you know, gonna be the messenger. Um, and I, maybe the chairman can revise the schedule. But I, I don't think it's gonna be productive. That's just my opinion, based on X amount of years in the school committee, X amount of years in the city council. We should be affording people the opportunity to ask questions or get back and forth, give a presentation vehicle to the superintendent. And also, we're gonna have the legislative delegation. So are they gonna delegate amongst themselves to speak about their concerns? Or maybe something, updates from the, the health, so to speak? That's all gonna be in one hour. I don't think it's productive. Thank you.
Member Maxwell?
Uh, this, I, so I'm very confused. We've known about this joint meeting for a while, correct? We've known about it for a couple of weeks, at least.
I've been announcing it publicly for over a month. And after coordinating with the superintendent for, you know, a date, that would probably work. So...
So my question is, is why can't, why can't we present the next year's budget? If we already have it and we've known about this meeting for a month.
So...
I definitely won't have it for Monday night.
Yeah, so, so we're not in a position to, to really get into detail regarding fiscal year '26 that's not been, you know, developed yet. Uh, but nevertheless, you know, the thinking that I had at least was that this would be another opportunity for us to perhaps have, you know, a forum that is, uh, you know, watched by individuals in the community to advocate for additional funding owing into the next fiscal year, uh, separate from, say, a traditional school committee setting. Um, regarding the time concerns, over the past couple of years, we've typically tried to piggyback a school committee, a joint meeting with a city council meeting. So that, that was the thinking, where they have a regularly scheduled meeting on the 17th. And so simply having us come in for that time beforehand, that was the thought. Um, you know, at this point, I, I've been announcing that this would be happening for some time. Uh, so, you know, my intent is to post a meeting. And if perhaps the committee, um, you know, isn't available, we don't have a quorum, uh, then that's another issue that we would deal with in the moment. But nevertheless, you know, we, we've been going to the council with some asks over the past couple of months. Uh, they have been funding through city funds, the audit. Uh, we've gone to them for funding support for the deep cleans, et cetera. So I think there is ground that we can cover regarding the current fiscal year with the council. Um, that, that's my take and the reason why I see value in it. I also see value in, once we have, you know, a budget developed, going back to them with, say, the next fiscal year discussion, perhaps on a separate night, so that we have more than an hour where we can really argue our case for our schools and fully funding our schools. Uh, but nevertheless, that is the logic that I've had in satisfying the council's request for a meeting sooner than later.
I just don't see the harm in having this meeting. I don't see, the, I don't see, I guess I don't see what everybody else sees. I don't, I don't see why we can't sit at a table with the city councillors and discuss, fine, this past year, like, like the deep cleanings that we've had and the other things that have come up that weren't originally in the budget that the city has paid for. I'm not sure why we would be against sitting and having that discussion. I'm just confused.
Member Willeth?
We're dealing with like global issues. So this going from 70 custodians down to 46, that occurred, to my knowledge, over time, right? The 70 custodians down, because that predates me. I know we had to make reductions in terms of administrators. But then if you put on a city council meeting at times, you have certain city councillors saying, yeah, there's a lot of administrators at the Methuen Public Schools, which is not the case. I've, you look at the Pioneer Institute. the case. I've, you look at the Pioneer Institute, and we can have the superintendent furnish comparable districts to Muthun, like Malden, and maybe three or four other districts. We're not a top-heavy administration. So that metric, I'd love to have that identified to the city council. I'd love to have that for conversation. The thing about the custodians, I think a lot of that predates us, but the prior school committees had to make difficult decisions based on a limited budget, and also the inflation. The high water mark was two thousand and twenty-two of nine point one percent. So when we started to get additional monies through the Student Opportunity Act, bam, we got slammed by it with inflationary measures. So like, if we presented that to the city council, and that was alleviating some of their concerns, but sometimes they go onto these fishing expeditions, and we might have provided them information in the past, but they're gonna ask the same questions. I'm not gonna be party to that, 'cause I was on the city council, I was on the school committee. If there's questions that they want answered, we can provide packets of information. Same thing with the mayor with the question time, and I'm sure he's been angry at time, as I witnessed it. Like, they go off the reservation. Like, if it's a major issues with the deep cleaning and stuff like that, again, it could be because we went from seventy to forty-six with the custodians. And that's a conversation, how do you balance your budget of classroom sizes versus a proper complement of custodians? That's a, that's a conversation I can have. Or, we have X amount of administrators and an X amount of a budget for our administrators versus a Malden and other communities. I don't have a problem with that. Or how are we doing grant acquisition? That's something I know the mayor was talking about, working on grant acquisition. That's a good conversation. I'm not gonna be there to be thrown rocks at. I'm there to listen, and we did it with the audit. We had a good conversation with the audit. And I was in support of the audit, and through things beyond our control, now we're going through the process of the audit, finally, on the two, the financial and the culture, after, you know, almost two years now, right? So, again, it's something that I'm, I have no problem attending the meeting. And I participated in the political game before, so I don't have a problem with it. And you and I have been in different scenarios and asking questions. And I'll support city councillors asking questions, or us asking questions, or a give and take. But the dynamic of one hour and regurgitating the same things that were erroneous in the past, I don't think it's ultimately productive to us. But I'll attend the meeting anyways, but I think it's, it's, you know, it's a bleep show, so to speak. It's not gonna be something productive that night, I don't think.
Member Shabilia, follow up?
So, first and foremost, I think we need to put aside the narrative of the city council, because it's, it's, it's not something we're going to resolve, and all of these broad statements, that's, that's what the audit's for. That is why the city is doing these audits. We're gonna have something to substantiate whether or not we're top-heavy, or whether or not we have these issues, and what they are and what they aren't and all that. Let's, let's push that to the side right now, because it, it's not important. And then, the idea of, we need to report on the money that we've used for expenses, such as the audit and the deep cleans. The city council is not oblivious as they could potentially be. They know that this has been neglected for many years. This is not news, and anybody who's gonna sit at any table and say, "We didn't know" is lying, straight-up lying. So we don't, I don't think we need to go and talk to them, and what, oh, thank you and kiss the ring, thanks, guys, for giving us the money to do the cleaning. I made a comment about this at one point, and someone ripped me a new one, saying, "Well, we gave the tenny a new roof, 'cause the thing blew off into the soccer field." Don't tell me you gave the tenny a new roof. It literally got ripped off. But all of that aside, I, I just wanna veri- verify. Mr. Mayor, you had said that you'd be posting the agenda for the seventeenth with, and then if we don't have a quorum, what happens?
If there's not a quorum, then there's no meeting.
Meaning that if four out of the seven of us don't show up, the meeting would then be canceled on the spot?
Correct.
I don't think that that is respectful to the committee or to the district, and I think that does nothing but pour gasoline on an already burning fire between the two branches of government. Well, not branches of government, the city council and the school committee. If this body has said that is not a productive use of our meeting, I, putting that meeting forward is just inciting more of a disgruntled relationship. And then, to Member Willet's point, one hour, we're, we're going there to check a box. We're not accomplishing anything in one hour. Zero. Why? If we're going to do it, which I one thousand percent support, let's make it count, or let's not do it. I'm getting the, I'm getting the "I wanna say something" finger from Member Donovan, so...
So I, I, I think the, the poor horse in front of us is starting to be beaten soundly, but Member Donovan...
Thank you for that opportunity. So, I'm thinking, we have, okay, I, there's some, I have some confusion. So, we have to do this meeting? We're mandated?
Two meetings.
Two meetings. Okay, so we have to do it. What can we do to make it purposeful and productive? What can we do? How do we work with our council friends with, on the agenda, so it is purposeful and productive and respectful? And I will say that what really bothers me is all the discussions about, well, they're gonna say that, and, I mean, I watch the council meetings too, and sometimes my feelings get hurt. But, I've gotten to know some of the councillors, and I think that's what we need, we need to be together to move the city forward. And we may disagree, but I think we have to meet and try to be professional about it, and it's not an, this is mine, this is yours, this belongs to the city. So, I think it's important, maybe we all sit next to a partner, but we have to get to work with them. We have to. So what would be purposeful and productive? Off the top of my head, this, I think the data that Dr. Quang put together, I think it's pretty telling. And I, I would like to know that, as a citizen, like, what, how, where would my money go? Like, how are our schools changing? How are we responding? So I think something like that would be helpful. I know there's been a lot of discussion about the central building in the last few days. And I think a lot of that is just because people don't know where the responsibilities begin and end. So, if we could somehow work with representatives from the council to create a meaningful agenda, I'm all in. And I look forward to working with some of our colleagues down at City Hall.
Dr. Quang, something to add?
So, listening to all this, and having been privy to these double meetings for the past seven years with various school committees, mayors, and city council members, if we're going to have this meeting on Monday, which it sounds like, I'm, I'm not sure yet, actually, what it sounds like, but if we're going to have this meeting on Monday, I will say, just to reiterate to everybody again, this policy was put in place because of the deficit in two thousand and eighteen, that the city council really wanted assurance, as did the school committee, that they were going to have preview and understanding that we were not going to end the school year in any given future years in the red. That is why these policy, this policy was created. So we're, so, over the years, I would say, in my seven years, 'cause it started my first year that we put this policy in place, Mr. Goslin and I have really focused on that part of the conversation in these joint meetings. And it has typically been a quick one-pager of, you know, sort of where we are with the general budget, where we expect to be, what we spent more money on this year, contracted services, our contracts, right, our, all of our contract negotiations. I'm wondering, from my standpoint, because if we don't have some, it's really challenging, I think, to get sixteen people to agree on what that agenda's gonna be, that if you allow me to work with the mayor, I would think a one-pager in sense, right, makes the most sense to say, here's where we are FY twenty-five, here's what we're concerned about in FY twenty-six. There's no real numbers attached to that, but I have been going to all the school councils at the schools. I've gone to three, I have two this week, preparing sort of that conversation with the staff and families on the school councils about what we're in for a little bit, like, what are our concerns? And I think that's a preview to twenty-six, right? Our chapter seventy increase decreased, right? So try and explain that to people, how the funds work. I've had fantastic conversations with the school council. If I memorialize that, I think we could at least have that. And I have, I think Mr. Goslin and I have absolutely gotten that question every single year we go in the spring of, what's your twenty-six budget look like? What's, you know, like, it's, that's within the purview of the school committee to go line by line and understand the school budget, keeping, of course, the city council informed. So, I would be, feel like it would be upon me and Mr. Goslin in reviewing it with the mayor to present like a one-page succinct conversation. Again, it's one hour. We have done this for seven years now. I'm gonna do whatever is at the will of the committee to have this joint meeting, but I would be obliged to make sure that we had enough information that we are presenting to the city council. If there are questions, the, the meeting will end before seven o'clock. If there's another meeting, we have another night that is not time-sensitive, that we can really dive a little deeper into their questions about the FY twenty-six budget, and when it looks like, once we present it, and once you all have had the opportunity to discuss it, see it, have a few meetings with us, that certainly would be, no, the timing of the two meetings has never been set. I think that's part of the challenge with this, is it, it doesn't say, like, one in the fall, one in the spring. It just says two meetings, and it's challenging. But, again, I'll do whatever is at the will of the committee, but I can, I can definitely put together a one-pager that sort of says, here's where we are, which will be easier, 'cause we do know where we are. But here are some of the convers, the challenges on the table, right? We're very in tune to what's happening with DESI and the state and federal funds. They're not as, you know, quite as privy to understanding that conversation. So it, we could do something like that. And again, that conversation is very fresh. That is the conversation I've been having with the school councils. So I just wanna put that out there.
Thank you, Dr. Quang. So, not to sound like a jerk, or a dictator, or anything like that, this was on the agenda for discussion. I'm not about to go before the city council on Monday night and say, JK lol, about the date. I'd been talking about it for a while, so I would like to proceed with having that for the purpose Dr. Quang outlined. I understand there's some disagreement, but, you know, we, we settled on this, I think, over a month ago, just in terms of a date that we thought would work. But nevertheless, we have, Member DiZoglio, something, real quick?
Okay. So I'm just saying, if, if, if we are gonna do this meeting, I don't know if the city council, I don't know if the city council would wanna meet an extra hour earlier, maybe five, if they are up to that. So we have a two-hour productive meeting?
I don't think we need that much time. This is gonna be largely a review of, you know, where we're at fiscal year twenty-five.
I'm just trying to get the other members to maybe wanna...
I, I appreciate it. So, there's really no, no actionable item. This was just a discussion. I wanted to, Member Maxwell, briefly.
I know that a quorum is four out of the seven of us, but with you being the mayor and the chair of the committee, do you count in that seven?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So it does have to be four of us?
I do.
Gotcha. So you would be one of four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Keep in mind, Mr. Chair, I won't be there, 'cause I will be out of town anyways.
I understand. I, I apologize for, I didn't check with you beforehand, but, um, yeah. So, we'll, we'll have for fiscal year twenty-six, perhaps I'll, I'll coordinate with the superintendent to maybe go through her to confirm availability for fiscal year twenty-six discussions. So that does it for our agenda. I need a motion to adjourn.
Do we have other business before we adjourn?
That was other business. Or do we have?
No, that was a item.
So do we have, okay, other business, sure.
Just have one. I would like to add to the next agenda. I would like to say, I saw that the tenny got a steep clean over February break, wish everything looked good. I do, however, though, would like to know, because we're moving forward, what we're doing for a plan, so, especially where it comes to the budget, where even exterior traps, and I know the city has paid for that upfront, well, is that gonna be in our fiscal budget? What are we doing to tidy up the custodians, the peston reports? I would like some clarification of who's in charge of that, and et cetera. So I, I will be asking a lot of questions when I see the facilities report, but that's what I'm gonna be looking at for the next meeting.
Member Shabilia?
I'll be quick. I have four quick points. And, Dr. Quang, you and I haven't really had a chance to talk about this yet, but it was brought to my attention that you had a day disrupted recently by the city council, where you were abruptly removed from your office and brought to Central, Central Street. And spent the day there, if I'm not mistaken?
I toured the central school with the mayor and a couple of city council members.
And it wasn't a planned thing. I guess, I, I just, I take issue with the city council coming in and abruptly taking the superintendent, who I'm sure had other things on her calendar for that day, and stuff to do. And I don't know if that's a conversation that the table needs to have, if there needs to be some, I don't know, policy or procedure where it is, it is scheduled, but I can guarantee you, they would not be thrilled if I walked in and said, "Hey, Linda, come with me. We're going to tour the Searls Estate right now." It would, it would not go well. Second, the, the warrants, I know we all get those lovely messages from Ian saying, "Please sign the warrant. I wanna get these people paid." It is three, maybe four of us that have ever signed a warrant, and I don't know what the problem is, but when I'm going to be away, starting Thursday, and may or may not have the ability to sign a warrant, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but that means they sit.
Yes and no. It's not as bad as you think. As soon as I get three, I have enough.
Okay.
And I stop. If I don't get those three, I do start reaching out to Ken, to Ryan, to others. I know that you three usually sign pretty quickly, and I get my three, but I'm not afraid to chase them down, too.
All right. So as long as you're getting what you want, because I was under the impression that it was sitting and stale, and that's when I got an angry text message.
And then one of you guys signed, so, I said, "Oh, I don't need to now, Ken," so...
All right. There, I, I've heard that our director of facilities is retiring soon. I know he's announced that a few times in the past, so it's not like a sure thing that he's actually gonna go. But I just wanna make sure that we're, we're, we're planning for that, especially since the budget packet's coming. And the last thing, I wanna end on a positive note. Did Read Across America last week at the Marsh. You were there. Then, the Timony. The Marsh was fantastic. The Timony was so much fun. And then Branch Street this morning, which was fun, but in a very exhausting way. But it was, it was awesome, and I think that it is a great event that, I don't know if the PTOs run it, or the schools, whoever's doing it, but it's fantastic, and kudos to them. Thank you.
And the tenny and CGS will be the first week of May, first and second week of May for the children's week, so we don't bother.
No, I almost ended up at the tenny last Friday, and then realized that it was the Timony, because someone gave me bad information, Mary Beth.
Tenny and CGS will be in May, so keep your eyes on that one.
Member Donovan?
Yeah, just real quick, and on a positive note, thank you for the PTOs for organizing, and whoever at Branch Street for Read Across America. And we talk about how to find money for things, and when I was at the Marsh, I heard a conversation about how the sound system in the auditorium is so much better now. And I got to go in, and it was indoor recess. And Mrs. Gordon filled me in that they got kind of a grant from the photography company that they use. So I thought that was creative. The kids were really enjoying indoor recess, because they had a sound system that worked, and I'm sure a lot of people benefit from it. So shout out for that innovative way of trying to get things for our kids.
That's great. Anything else? Member Willet?
Mr. Chairman, I had sent an email to the superintendent regarding her contract, which is up for June, and I know that she had CC'd to your attention, and that there's a process. I just wanted to make sure it's part of the record, that I did bring it to the superintendent's attention, and that we're starting the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Willet. Lastly, I'll add, we have an executive session scheduled via Zoom this coming Wednesday at six, so keep an eye out for that. We, we do, we do. Check your, it'll be in your email, information about that, and that's been posted as well. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion from Member Shabilia, second from Member Donovan. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The time is roughly, I believe...
Seven forty-four.
Seven forty-four. We are adjourned.
Good night, Muthun.